Project and. Alex, are you?
Good evening.
All right, Alex, we could be on the seat.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, nice to be with you all. You know, I'm having a hard time hearing unfortunately. Well, maybe you could state what you hoping for one more time. I don't know where the mic is, but it's a little garbled on your end.
Alex, it's Victor. I was just hoping you could give a quick intro to us and Cascadia Partners and then I'll pass it to.
Wonderful. Yeah, yeah. So we are an urban planning, real estate feasibility and consulting firm based out mostly out of Portland, but I'm based in Bend, Oregon, and we've been working on housing policy and housing feasibility projects around the state for a number of years and including this one, trying to help communities figure out how to improve their housing production targets and how to meet their housing needs, both citywide, but also on sites, you know, individual sites like like the rural district. So I oversee our real estate services portfolio across the United States and assist Victor and others on our team when there's questions of a real estate feasibility and those kind of questions that come up in our project. So glad to be here tonight. I'm going to be mostly support supporting Victor on tonight's presentation, but happy to participate and offer thoughts as they come up.
I need to keep this right next to me or can you? Just hold it. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Josh La Bombard. I'm the Southern Oregon representative with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I cover the Jackson, Justine and Douglas Counties generally, and right now I'm covering all central Oregon for the department. So it what I'm just going to give a little bit of background of how we kind of got to where we are right now. So you know, when Oregon, we're when we do housing planning, we're looking at looking at, looking at the need, the 20 year need for a community and balancing that with the supply for a community and determining whether or not a community has enough land to fulfill its 20 year need. So it's long term need. So your previous planning director, Kristin came to the department, it came to me and to talk about getting a grant to help study a UGB amendment, Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. The assumption being that the city doesn't have enough land to fulfill its need. And then that that conversation kind of spawned into a conversation about the railroad district because the railroad district represents a large chunk of undeveloped land that's currently in your urban growth boundary, whether it's feasible or not to develop was the real question. And it's been, you know, a bone of contention, I think, for quite a while for the community and trying to develop this area. So we agreed that the best solution for the community was to issue a grant to hire a consultant to basically study the feasibility of this area, whether it or not it's actually feasible to develop a portion of it, all of it. To be able to help inform the community and the city council to be able to make a legislative decision as to whether to continue to move forward with this, being in your urban growth boundary or to facilitate maybe some different, a different path, which we can go into a little bit later. So that's kind of what the background, what spurred this whole project. And then I'll let Victor go through the slideshow and then we can get then he'll probably turn it over back to me as to the extent of talking about what, what do you do now? What do you do with this information?
Okay, so I'm going to go over a brief presentation that reviews our information that we've gathered as part of this project. And then we'll leave sufficient time at the end for questions and discussions. So we'll just ask that you hold your comments and questions until the end. Thank you. And so as Josh was saying, for our project overview, it really stems from three things. So recognizing that housing is a growing need for the city. And that the railroad district is the city's currently only designated area within the urban growth boundary for housing growth. We needed to update the city's factual basis for the railroad district to understand if it's actually a possibility or a good idea to go forth with development in that area. So that's what this project is. And I'm going to review some key takeaways that we had from our advisory committee. Before we move on to some of the updated findings that we have as part of tonight's discussion. So up to date, we've now had two meetings with advisor committee. The last one just haven't been two hours ago or so. And so this slide summarizes our key takeaways from the first meeting that happened back in April twenty twenty four. And really, the key takeaways from the first advisory committee was we wanted to clarify our objective. I think there was some confusion on what the project was trying to achieve. And like Josh said, the main goal of this project is really to equip the city with a better understanding of the railroad district. It's been a long time. The, the land has been a part of the city's strategic reserve for housing development for a few decades. And we just needed a way to update our understanding of if that piece of land was suitable or not. And feasibility comes from a few different lenses. So there's the cost portion of it from an infrastructure side, how costly would it be to unlock the offsite and onsite infrastructure needed to service new development in the railroad district? The market feasibility side, would there be sufficient market interest in developing in the railroad district? What types of housing products would most likely end up in the railroad district? And city and landowner commitment. So that's, that's kind of a relational aspect of the project. Is there actually commitment from landowners and the city to make development happen? And finally, on the land use procedure side, regardless of what scenario happens within the railroad district, each scenario comes with different regulatory kind of procedures and pathways, and it's important to understand what the trade offs there are. And we've noted that most of the advisory members, advisory committee members are generally not supportive of development in the railroad district for many different reasons. And there are varying degrees of emphasis there of why they think the railroad district is not suitable. It mainly falls under three categories. So safety, we heard was a top priority for advisory committee members. The potential need to actually close railroad crossings was a really big one, especially in the context of emergency access or evacuation, like, like in the fire. Residents thought that additional development could pose additional traffic congestion and impact existing land uses, things like that. From the cost feasibility standpoint, the advisory committee thought that the sheer amount of dollars needed to unlock development would just be a huge kind of pain factor that would need to be overcome to unlock feasibility and that might not be worth it. And finally, we heard that the railroad district is potentially a mismatch for housing, given that it's located further away from existing services and transportation networks and amenities. So these were kind of the, the key takeaways that we heard from our first advisory committee and we, we just had another one right before this and I'll, I'll work on summarizing our notes there, but generally in the same sentiment with a little bit more specific nuance as to what next and some of the decisions that could be made from that. So we'll get into that as we review the scenarios and potential next steps with the project. And since the last time we met with the advisory committee in April of twenty twenty four, we've had a few updated findings. So on the infrastructure cost side, we now have a more comprehensive understanding of the big ticket offsite infrastructure items that need to be updated and their cost amounts. And in addition to the onsite infrastructure costs needed to unlock development. So we have better updated numbers. And we've also interviewed the corp and the talent irrigation district to understand some of the regulatory implications of railroad crossing closures as well as development near the irrigation canal itself. On the market feasibility side, we've tested different types of housing prototypes to see what would make more or less sense in the railroad district. And then we were able to conduct one additional interview with a landowner in the railroad district to understand their intentions with the land and their kind of hopes and aspirations for the future. And finally, all of this leads us to scenario specific considerations that we'll review as part of today's conversations. And this lives as an appendix to our report, but I put it on screen here just to show that a major part of our work was to update some of the previous cost estimates that the city has had for the known types of infrastructure improvements. So like I said before, the offsite infrastructure costs are, you can think of those as kind of like the big ticket infrastructure items that would need to be updated in order to unlock development. Things like updating railroad crossings, the need for a big east west collector street that would form the basis of accessibility and circulation within the railroad district if it was developed. Upgrades to the water tank for seismic safety. And in addition, substantial upgrades to the capacity of the stormwater. So you'll see that we have a column of that notes the previous cost estimate where those exist. So those come from various documents like the TSP. And those numbers are quite outdated. So we wanted to work with the city's engineers and public work staff to get a more current sense of the magnitude of costs needed to update, update those.
I think one of the things we heard from the, I'm sorry, citizens advisory committee earlier today is that these estimates might be lower because of some of the nuances as far as getting private easements and closures and things. So if anything, these, these estimates are probably on the lower end.
Yeah, thanks. There was a, there were comments made in the advisor committee that these numbers don't reflect the time cost of procedural things associated with improvements or acquisitions or some of the quasi judicial procedures that could happen. So these numbers purely reflect the engineering and physical cost to upgrade some of these big infrastructure items and, and maybe not some of the more soft costs, time cost estimates. And, and I'll just quickly note, we also have a bucket for onsite improvements, which are more local improvements needed to service any type of development should they occur. So roads, water, stormwater, sewer, electric. And so our team worked with the information we've received from developers and brokers in the region to develop a spectrum of different housing prototypes. So you'll see them on screen here. So they range from on the lower density side, housing types like large lot, single family. All the way to the other end where we have townhomes and then in between housing types like small lot, single family and duplexes. Developing these prototypes was an important part of the process because it allows us to model in specific scenarios. What types of housing could yield in that scenario and what are their price points? So that was the point of creating these development prototypes here. And I'll note that this may not be a part of your packet. I added this in kind of last minute, but for each of these housing prototypes, they have different unit sale prices depending on their slope conditions. This is really crucial because in the railroad district, the majority of the land is actually sloped either moderately or severely. So either between five and 10% slope or over 10% slope. And the same, for example, large lot, single family home built on flat land is going to sell for a different price point than one on a higher slope. And, and different scenarios will have more or less of different types of housing. So this leads us to the railroad district itself and some of the scenarios that we'd like to discuss with you today. And so like I said before, the railroad district, the majority of the railroad district is quite sloped. On this map here, everything in white represents slopes less than 5%, so relatively flat. This pertains really only to one parcel, like my cursor is circling here near rap road. And then you'll see in the tan color, those are medium slopes, so five to 10%. And in green, severe slope, so over 10% slope. And really, yeah, besides the one parcel by rap road, the rest of the railroad district has some amount of slope. The master plan created in two thousand and seven is our last touch point on what a comprehensive development scenario could be for the railroad district. So we brought it up to say, and this was kind of the the latest thinking where should development occur, there would be lower density housing in the high slope areas. So kind of in yellow here. In orange would be medium density housing aligned with the medium slopes. And then that flat piece of land that I pointed out earlier currently is actually zoned industrial and is something that we could in our project, we considered for housing, given its flat soap conditions. And this green dash line is the, the new railroad district collector, so the east west collector. And the reason the master plan introduced this was a means of providing internal circulation for the railroad district in the event that the railroad crossings would be closed. So there are five railroad crossings that access the railroad district. And if more railroad crossings, or sorry, if more development were to occur, it's the corpse policy that some of the railroad crossings would actually need to be closed for safety. And so our project team had a conversation with the corp more recently and they let us know that while it is possible with safety upgrades, so gates and lights to keep some of the railroad crossings open. It is still ultimately their jurisdiction to decide if the railroad crossings remain open or not. So all to say, it's, it's very unknown and risky to assume that the railroad crossings could be kept open or not. It's ultimately up to the corp. And from a housing need standpoint, so we put this slide in here to show that the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, which is basically a state mandated calculation on housing number and type in a 20 year time horizon for the city of talent estimates that around 680 units of housing is needed. I, I think that figure might be slightly outdated and somewhere in the 700s now. And if we were to take our last touch point, which is the master plan that was done in two thousand and seven, that plan projected the railroad district yielding somewhere around 400 units of housing. So all this to say, if we were to take that number and compare it to our known estimate of needed housing today, the railroad district would represent at most 60% of the city's housing need. So regardless of scenario, if the railroad district was to be considered in totality or not, it's just another way of recognizing the housing need that's required of the city. So this brings us to the actual scenarios themselves. You'll see we created four of them for conversation and by no means is this exhaustive. It was just what our team thought would make for good comparison and contrast. And I'd like to walk through each of these scenarios with you a little bit more and discuss their trade offs and then the presentation will kind of stop after this and we'd love to hear your thoughts on both these scenarios, but then also what you think the city should do with this information. So I'll go over them, over them one by one. And the first scenario is one where we assume development in the entire railroad district. And some things to call out here. Because of the slope conditions and capacity, infrastructure capacity, there would be a, a huge need for significant upgrades to the infrastructure to allow for development in this scenario. So you'll see for each of these scenarios, I've appended a, an estimated infrastructure cost number. For this scenario, it's 220 million. This encapsulates both the, the big ticket infrastructure items like the east west district collector, the railroad crossing upgrades, and the stormwater upgrades, as well as some of the more localized improvements like new sewer lines, electric lines, water lines, etc. And, and because we're assuming development in the entirety of the railroad district and importantly unlocking the flat parcel here that's currently zoned industrial to allow for housing. We think this scenario could yield around 430 units of housing or so. And so not, not the 680 units that would be required of or estimated from the OMA, but it represents a good chunk of that housing need. And some other things to note, there would have to be significant coordination between the city and all of the property owners to actually allow for improvements to service the railroad district. So things like the east west district collector would require right of way acquisition from the properties along the east west collector to make happen. And so that we acknowledge as a, a huge barrier and challenge to happen. And yeah, some other things to note include this would also require annexation of many properties within the study area. Currently, there are only two properties that are within city limits and annexed. The rest are not. So they would need to be brought in and rezoned and actually allowed for housing.
I think it's important to point out which property. So the Belmont property and then the rap, the property on the north side, near rap road. Those are the two properties currently in the rest can just urban growth boundary.
Thank you. And then the last thing I'll note is in this map here, the green circles show the railroad crossings that are meant to remain open and upgraded so that those are the rap road railroad crossing and the Belmont crossing and then the three other crossings to our best knowledge would have to be closed unless the corp thinks otherwise. So that has implications. As mentioned earlier, for safety and circulation, but something to keep in mind. The second scenario is one where we really concentrate development in the flat area of the railroad district. So the one parcel by rap road that currently is under one property owner. We've actually had an opportunity to meet with the property owner of this tax lot. And they're very amenable to housing developments. It's something that's been on their horizon for a while and something they'd actually like to see. So at least from a coordination perspective, we know that there's symbiosis there. They would want to see housing development. And this scenario doesn't require most of the major offsite infrastructure improvements shown in the last slide. So there's, there would be no need for the, the big east west collector to connect the the railroad district. There would really only be localized improvements and onsite improvements to service the housing development on that tax lot. We think because this tax lot is flat and closer to the existing city, it would make sense to be zoned for something higher density. So the R M H zone, I think is the highest density zone the city has, but this would allow for, sorry, RHD. RHD zone. And this would allow for things like duplexes and townhomes. So kind of on the other or on the end of the spectrum of housing prototypes that we showed that's higher density. And, and due to this, the flat parcel could yield somewhere around 150 units, which represents at only 22% of the housing need if we're using the ONA number as our, as our benchmark. And yeah.
I was just gonna comment, I think the, the infrastructure costs here are still projected to be quite high. And that has a little bit to do with the fact that rap road would, at the railroad crossing, that would need to be realigned. So that's a pretty significant, what did we say, three and a half, four and a half, I believe. And that might be on the low end. So it's, it still has some significant infrastructure costs.
Yes, good point. The third scenario is where we develop only on the flat and moderately sloped areas of the railroad district. So this would include the parcel we just looked at as well as portions of all the other parcels within the railroad district, but only the moderately sloped parts. And this scenario is tricky because it still requires the majority of the major offsite improvements that the developed entire railroad district scenario requires. So things like the major east west collector, the stormwater capacity upgrades, the railroad crossing upgrades, they would all still be needed. uh, the railroad crossing upgrades, they would all still be needed, but for less of the land available for development. And so we've noted this scenario as needing full property owner coordination due to those big uh, utility improvements. And only to achieve around forty-three percent of the housing needs at full build-out. So that's around three hundred units or so. And as well, this scenario would require annexation of most tax lots as, as we said earlier, only two of the current tax lots are within uh, city limits. Finally, our last scenario is maybe the most ambiguous, but uh, it would be to consider other housing production methods. So this would be a scenario where the city deems that all or a portion of the railroad district is actually not feasible for development, uh, given a variety of different factors. And the city could choose to evaluate other means of achieving housing need either within its UGB or uh, other urban reserves. And this could include um, increasing housing production in those areas or portions of. And there could also be an option of swapping the railroad district with uh, other urban reserves, but this I'll highlight is not uh, a guaranteed process. And, and it's complicated, given that some of the tax slots are already within city limits.
And we can spend some time talking about that.
Yeah. Oh, maybe I'll just go to that now and then we can review.
Um, no, I think.
Okay.
I think the infrastructure, the plot, I think that's, that's scenario summary.
Yeah.
Really helpful.
Okay. And so this will be our last slide before we kind of open it up for questions and comments. But we created a uh, scenario summary that compares and contrasts the different scenarios just purely based on the main attributes of these different scenarios. So you'll see we have scenarios one, two, and three here, and then scenario four being consider other parts of the city or uh, other housing production methods is not on here. And so some things to note from this slide include the build the entire railroad district scenario represents a huge amount of infrastructure costs. So that's this line item here. And what we're really trying to test for is a feasibility gap. So if we take the total known amount of dollars needed to unlock development through building infrastructure, and we take the total known kind of sales revenue or projected sales revenue from new housing units that are made, is that enough to cover infrastructure and uh, kind of the sunk costs of needing to unlock development? It's a, it's a crude way for us to understand feasibility. Um, and the short answer is in scenarios one and three. So in the develop all of the railroad district scenario and develop only the flat and moderately sloped areas scenario, uh, these have extreme kind of like negative deltas that you'll see in this bottom row. Um, and would require significant means of uh, funding infrastructure. So the city would need to think through subsidies or grants or other development tools uh, to help overcome that feasibility. Um, our team has helped uh, craft a few of these tools and studied them more in depth. It lives as a chapter of the housing implementation plan, so a summary of this work. Uh, it's something we could share uh, after the fact. But I'll note that for scenario two, um, the one where we develop only the flat area of the railroad district, it represents the smallest delta, so this number here of around ten million dollars difference. Um, partially due to the size, it's not the entire railroad district. It's not needing all of the major improvements listed for the railroad district. But like Josh said, it still requires uh, the rap road railroad crossing to be upgraded, which is a significant cost. That's around four million dollars, as well as uh, some of the more local onsite infrastructure costs for new sewer lines, water lines, electric lines, et cetera. Um, and it leaves us with our questions here, and in this table, you'll notice that for each scenario, we calculated an infrastructure cost per unit, and I just want to make clear what that is. Um, this calculation is the total infrastructure cost, so both off-site and onsite in each scenario divided by the number of housing units we think that scenario can yield. So it's a, a way for us to compare scenarios and the kind of efficiency, if you will, of that scenario in unlocking housing. So you'll see in scenario one for full build-out, given the, the major infrastructure costs needed, it represents an infrastructure cost of around five hundred sixteen thousand per unit, which is significant. Whereas in scenario two, uh, if it's the flat area only and we're focusing on uh, the rap road railroad crossing upgrade along with onsite infrastructure costs, uh, that infrastructure cost per unit would only be around a hundred thirty thousand. It still could be a lot, as we know, there's a, there's a delta and would require some uh, subsidy or infrastructure funding to overcome. Uh, but if we're looking at a magnitude of difference, if we're treating it as a magnitude of difference exercise, this is helpful for understanding what's quote-unquote more feasible. Um, so I'll, I'll leave this slide up, but we first wanted to ask if there are any clarifying questions about the scenarios or the project that we could help answer? And then we'll, we'll kind of get into your thoughts of what the scenario, which scenarios make more or less sense and some of the trade-offs that you think are more or less appealing to you.
What you do with this information?
Yes.
Going a little bit with how you came out with the uh, the price per unit. Um, did you like, um, did you take the infrastructure costs and kind of shunt them to the side and figure out just based on, you know, like the quality, the size of the unit and the area, what it would go for? Or did you, and, and it sounds like you didn't actually build in the infrastructure costs into the cost of the unit?
Um, did you reference this, Pat, that I have on?
Um, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, um, these ones, so we utilized a series of interviews with developers and brokers in the region, and we actually created a pro forma for each of these building types. Um, it's just another way of saying, we got a more accurate understanding of the construction costs, the land costs, uh, the SECs and Bs associated with building these types. And we constructed a, an Excel sheet that uh, shows the development results of each of these types. I have to double check, but I'm pretty sure each of these prototypes include onsite cost assumptions. So, you know, the, the need for, for it to come and stream back up, um, telling these.
Right, okay. Yeah.
At least the standard.
The standard, the standard infrastructure set. So all of that, all of that above the line, you know, if the city were to magically snap their fingers and come up with it, and that money would be taken care of, then you would see the cost of, of the, the units would be what we see represented here.
Exactly.
So it's, it's really carved out that it's like twenty-five million or something, that upper part of the graph is really carved out. Um, aside from all the, the calculations that you've done on.
That's correct, that's because um, we had to assume that these big-ticket infrastructure items, they could live as part of certain scenarios, but not others. And so for the actual housing prototypes itself, we needed a way of understanding the costs that are localized with just that housing type if it were built. Uh, and then these numbers were factored into the scenario. So for example, um, in scenario one, when we look at the development of the whole railroad district, for that four hundred twenty-six units, I actually have a breakdown. So it's a book down what types of housing would go in that scenario. So uh, in the more sloped areas, this would be.
In the more sloped areas, it would be the large lot, single-family, um, the moderately sloped areas, small lot, single-family primarily. And then the flat area, more reserved for higher density housing. Um, so these housing types uh, include the onsite infrastructure costs. And then because this scenario is the build entirety of the railroad district scenario, we also layered on the, the big-ticket off-site infrastructure costs. So the, you know, the east-west collector, Belmont Road railroad crossing, rap road railroad crossing upgrades, uh, the stormwater uh, capacity upgrade to arrive at this kind of total infrastructure cost amount here. Does that kind of help clarify?
Yeah, it does help clarify. I think, I think there was, I was, you know, trying to imagine where somebody thought this could pencil out. And in my, in my fascination, it's like, yeah, but you're in these, that they just priced the houses like a hundred thousand dollars something. You would normally sell it for to kind of absorb all of that and say, oh, but you're in the lovely Rogue Valley or whatever. So I, I was just trying to, uh, I guess the understanding of the price that you're selling the house for on the market and everything isn't, you know, necessarily all that you had to.
No, yeah.
Build it. So that's why it really helps to separate out, as you have done, the upper part of the, to say, here is this, this is why it's locked, here is this barrier.
Yeah.
Um, and there's no, you know, magic grant to make that happen.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I'm very happy.
I wanted to clarify, the cost of building the unit, it's not on it.
Um, it's not in the scenario summaries, but in the, in this table here where I've labeled total development costs. So this line item represents uh, the total infrastructure cost plus the total housing cost. So you could get at what you're asking for by subtracting these two numbers together, just to arrive at the actual cost of construction itself of housing.
Just in the one place where they occurred, within the use that five hundred and sixteen thousand is that infrastructure cost for that unit?
Exactly.
That's the sales.
Uh, you're talking about these numbers?
Right.
The, that's just the infrastructure cost, like the, yeah, that, that doesn't include the, the sales price or anything.
And, and just another way to think about this summary is, um, you know, if, if the city or some other public entity were to consider making public investments in the public infrastructure necessary to serve this area, that's how much it costs per unit to, to realize these housing types, right? So um, we oftentimes when we're talking about housing production, talk about what's the, what's the, what, what does it cost the public to generate an affordable housing unit? Uh, or some other type of housing unit, um, and um, in terms of the, the actual development costs associated with the unit itself. And so this is, you know, if you think about, if there's a big financial gap in this project and the scenarios, it differs from scenario to scenario, but there's a, there's a financial gap here. Um, how, what does it translate to if there was a public sector contribution? Well, on the next slide, Victor, you can see that in order to get the units, scenario one, is on the, on the very last slide where the questions are. Where the questions, discussion questions are. So, so scenario ones, you'd have to pony up five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a unit in order to get this thing built. Um, that's the, that's the gap, that's what the gap translates to. That's the whole, financial hole. Scenario two, it's smaller, but there's still a gap of, that translates to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars per unit in order for someone to, to do this project. So there's a pretty substantial gap on a per-unit basis, it just helps make it real. Could you go and build a unit for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars today? Uh, in public subsidy? No, that's low, but these other ones are quite high, so just puts it into comparable context. So if the public was willing to contribute, scenario two might be, you know, worth maybe considering in some fashion if there was uh, some expectation of the affordability or, or if the units were in need and could be, could meet some specific part of the housing need moving forward, maybe that's, you know, an investment that city or some other public entity could consider making, but uh, these are pretty substantial numbers.
Victor, Victor, at least have a hand up for us.
Is there a part amount that is for a scenario, kind of for an infrastructure cost per unit that is affordable? What would, what would that be? Like normally, what is standard?
Yeah, we had a very similar question in the advisory committee meeting. And uh, we don't have an answer to that at the moment. I think the reason it's hard to answer that question is because we're looking specifically at the railroad district. So your question is almost like, what's, what's a, a normal feasible development type? And the, the normal range of infrastructure costs associated with that? Um, it's, it's again tricky for us to answer because we've looked just at the railroad district. And if we were to compare it to another example of, or like a case study of development elsewhere, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be apples to apples, really. And it'd be hard for us to say this one is more normal than what we have in the, you know, railroad district. Yeah.
Ideally, you'd want to see the last uh, numbers in this table that's shown on the screen right now be positive. For anyone to, to sort of consider this to be a project worth pursuing.
That last line item there, um, what he was saying, Alex was saying, is that, that for that, for this to be in, uh, something that's attractive to a developer, to someone to, to build, that would be, that should be in the positive. Yeah, total development. Yeah, it should be in the positive.
I don't want to take people off the question money, but I want to jump back to you talked about the coordination between the city and the landowners to do this, but having had this in my face for ten years and, and getting traumatized every five years when it comes up again, um, I, I recognize that it's not just the landowners, it's not just the city, it's the county, it's ODOT and it's corp. So there's, you know, five large organizations that we're trying to deal with, and isn't the reality that we can't access this without addressing the railroad issue? And isn't it possible that we can come to them after doing all this work? And this, they say they aren't going to allow an at-grade crossing at either place?
Yeah.
I mean, I go to the corp's website and their splash page says the best at-grade crossing is the one that doesn't get built.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point, and per our discussion with the corp, they made it very clear to us that it's fully within their jurisdiction to decide the future of these railroad crossings and what heights and levels of improvements are needed. So you're absolutely right, I think it, it, the property owners and the cities are only two of the major players within this puzzle of trying to unlock development within the railroad crossing. Um, it is also partially why we wanted to consider uh, other development scenarios like scenario two, the flat parcel only. Cause we recognize that um, it's, it's a major barrier to try and get through a lot of the quasi-judicial procedures to actually allow for uh, development, you know, regardless of the infrastructure cost piece aside. Um, and so to us, scenario two represents one where uh, at least less of that coordination is needed. Still, the rap road railroad crossing is something that would require significant cost, but it's not like building the east-west collector or thinking through the closure of um, the other railroad crossings. So point well taken, it's, it's beyond, yeah.
And if I can just make one more point regarding the cost on the crossings, um, I've looked at it. The one that is close to us is the Central Point Twin Creeks, which started at four million dollars and was fourteen million dollars at the end. I just saw an article that in Bend, the city, the state is bailing them out to the tune of thirty-eight million dollars to upgrade the Reed Market Crossing. So what we're talking about can escalate out of control pretty quickly. And I would be really concerned about having low numbers with the situations as they are right now.
Excuse me just a minute, uh, Nick, could you make note that Commissioner Bullcart joined us at seven twenty? And uh, Mayor, you have a question? Oh, I just wanted to point out, you keep saying that you talked to corp, but isn't it ODOT rail? Is it, is it the railroad or is it ODOT rail that is in control of the crossing?
No, the, the corp, they own the rail, and then ODOT has a role, I'm trying to remember exactly what it is, but they Exactly what it is, but they work with the corp um.
I think the, it's part of the permitting process. It goes through, it goes through ODOT rail. But the corp owns it, so they're all, they're the ultimate decision makers.
I think, okay, so corp, the corp doesn't, doesn't make the laws about setbacks. That's ODOT.
Good question. I don't know.
Uh, that's pretty true, but uh, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a comment really, and that is that um.
Oh, uh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, what makes? Uh, what makes a hundred and twenty seven K the most efficient number is the assumption that um we would be. Converting white industrial land into housing and um. Uh, the last time we did it, uh, we, the last time we did that was on the other side of the railroad track. And at that point in time. Uh, we only have six acres of white industrial land to give up. And so we're at, I think, an acre and a half. I mean, so on the other side of this assumption. Or, or actually that what proceeds this assumption is another analysis of the city. And um, and what our needs are in terms of white industrial land. So it'd be interesting. What's clearly driving this cost up are the uh houses on the high slopes. And um, it would be interesting to see what that cost turns into. Uh, when you remove that a hundred and fifty. Units out of the four hundred and some odd units. I mean, there's a huge difference. And now you're looking at. You know, I, 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 if my math is right, somewhere probably in the neighborhood of more like eight hundred thousand dollars per unit and. Um, and that's just for the infrastructure. So I mean, I think it's important, we're talking about assumptions that. Aren't just a, let's go to the planning commission and rezone that property, you know, we, we have to. We have to not, we have to have the, the ability to exchange the lands. The last time we did that.
Yeah, that, that's a definitely a consideration for that scenario is there would, like you said. Need to be an assessment of the city's employment lands, something that Josh has brought up before. To ensure that, you know, that flat piece of land was rezoned for higher density housing that um. There aren't any significant conflicts with allowing industrial or other employment uses.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the second challenge to that is if there was ever, if there was any other desire to use for it, medium density or. Medium density or, or low density, did that drive up the cost? Because the infrastructure would still be the same. And then that's subject to how we need the analysis as well. I mean, we, you know, what? What inventory we, we still need, we, you know, so there's, there's, I, I think, it's just important for all of us who are having this discussion, that it's not. A slam dunk to just turn that land into housing. And um, we've, we've hit this wall a couple of times in the last couple of decades.
Right.
And when you take the housing out, there's no thing changes and there's no, there's no exception of it without that.
Councilor Colleen.
Thank you. Yeah, aside from that, um. Does anybody know, are there any plans or need by the city to upgrade the rap road rail crossing in the future? Like if option two was never to go forward, is there any safety consideration? Or anything in the plan to realign it or would it just stay exactly as it is?
The only thing I'm gonna say is that we loaded a, loaded a mechanism to pay for it. Oh, yeah.
It's in your, it's in your transportation system plan as, I don't know where it is. I'm a, a tier two. Okay, so it's like a. Project at the high level, but it's in the transportation system plan for that to happen, but. And that's even, and then just to back up, that's usually um up to try to leverage to get funding from like the council governments. When you go for, you know, infrastructure, federal infrastructure funding.
Councilor Fire, isn't it? Councilor Preston, sir.
Uh, just to that note, isn't it in our CIP to adjust rap road anyway, so we can add sidewalks? I mean, um, how, I'm wondering as we're thinking about all of this, if that triggers other changes to our current CIP. And um, what the financial uh implications of that are as well.
Developers that has to put in that, the sidewalks and the street and then get them to the city.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm wondering, with the rap road realignment, even if that stayed industrial, would you still need to do that for the industrial uses to be viable?
I mean, I think that would come down to the actual development scenario. So ODOT has, you know, development planners that review, you know, applications. So. Say hypothetically, a developer came in to develop an industrial use on the site, that would go through the ODOT permitting process. And if it, if it, you know, triggered a certain amount of trips or a certain threshold, it might trigger that, but it's a real hypothetical, yeah.
Yeah, question?
Couple of questions about the railroad crossings. Looking at development uh scenario two. Um, obviously you've got rap road, which is now a public crossing. The other crossings that are shown on that map. Are private crossings. And the next closest public crossing is public road crossing. So in this scenario. You would be closing all of those private crossings.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there should be a symbology here, but uh in scenario two, the rap road crossing would be the main. Upgraded crossing, which would allow for um housing, you know, on that parcel. And then the other railroad crossings, like you pointed out, those would remain as existing crossings. So.
Private crossings.
Right, yeah, cause when we talked with the corp, uh, they mentioned if. There were substantial housing development to happen in the railroad district. That's when something would happen with those crossings. But if it remains uh on, or kind of in today's condition, uh, they would just remain as private crossings. Or as they are today.
But if you move then to, I think it's scenario three, the development of the flat areas and the modest sloped areas. Would you then uh have to have a public crossing at Belmont?
Yeah.
And is that cost included?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
And when you're doing that, is the cost of dealing with. Uh, rap, I mean, excuse me, with the public road crossing also included because so far. ODOT and county and corp have said, we won't allow the public uh crossing at Belmont. Unless the public crossing and public road is closed.
I see.
Is that right?
Yeah, no, the, the infrastructure cost estimate that we have, the one that we showed. Uh, so for Belmont Road Crossing, there's four point one million. Uh, that's a very high level estimate for just upgrading the road to a public uh collector standard. So the city's standard for collector road, um, as well as bringing the railroad to grade. So it doesn't include. Costs associated with you said, with what you said, um, with the public road crossing closure or anything like that.
Either the public road crossing or an access road from the public road crossing area. Up to the new public road or the public crossing at Belmont, right?
Right, yeah.
So um, if you're looking at opening the Belmont Road Crossing. That four point one million dollars is not just a little, it's a lot of.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Go ahead.
I, yeah, I, I am remembering a number that is much, much larger. For that, to make that entire project feasible from earlier presentations.
I, I, I think we brought this up in the, the earlier meeting too, is that. That does not include the potential for takings from the people who live on Belmont Road. Um, that. The ODOT and corp both like a straight crossing right now. Belmont does not cross straight, so that would have to be changed. Um, yeah, there's, there's significant issues, but I, I think. We got the point that four point one is significantly low and.
Yeah, noted.
I think that, that my point would be, when you look at that final scenario summary, you know, that scenario is like a hundred and eighty million dollars in the hole. If it was close, then the different, you know, a couple million dollar differences would be really, you know, meaningful. A hundred and eighty million dollars or a hundred and ninety million dollars in the hole, like. Yeah. But no, but I mean, that's, that's the mean that I appreciate the comments, but I think we would have drilled down a little further, I guess, is what we were saying if. If it wasn't so far off already.
I got my Powerball ticket.
There's another question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of trying to take a few steps back on the, uh, the idea of subsidizing when it's appropriate for a city to go and subsidize. A, a project. And I'm looking um at the page of this scenario uh summaries. Um, and the, the average price per unit and what that translates into AMI. And, you know, of course. Um, the most expensive one, you know, uh. You know, the idea of subsidizing housing that's purchased by, you know, taxpayer subsidies going to housing that's purchased by people. Who make two hundred and twenty eight percent average um AMI is kind of, it's not what I usually associate with the term. Um, but even going to the scenario two, uh, on the average sales price per unit, you have that at three hundred and sixty two thousand, that's a hundred and fifty two percent. AMI, so that's not, you know, what we, we would even call workforce housing or um. You know, not affordable to most, to the average uh person. So I, I, I'm just wondering if it's even appropriate for uh to think about taxpayer money going, certainly not going. To subspace luxury housing, but even um that kind of housing, or is that number based on a certain density that could be adjusted?
Yeah, exactly. I, and Commissioner Davis brought this up in the last meeting as well. Um, in scenario two, we only assumed a mix of duplexes and townhomes and. Again, it's. How do I explain this? The, the housing mix that we went with, they're all new builds at today's, like if we assumed. A house was going to be built in today's dollars and it started today, it's our best guess for how much that housing would cost. It does not include however, a scenario where it's even higher density. I know the RHD zone, I hope I'm, I got that correct. Um, allows for multi-family, so. In that one scenario, it could easily include other forms of housing at lower price points potentially. Um, it could also include non-market uh housing development types. So maybe that's like workforce housing, like you said, or affordable housing. It all depends on the specificities of what development actually happens there if we choose to. Enable it and entitle it, which is a decision that the city would have to make. So all to say, uh, we took kind of a crude. Assumption of what that scenario would include of. In this case, it's market rate. Um, a mix of market rate, uh duplexes and townhomes primarily, but that's not to say other forms of housing. Would not be possible. It could happen.
Can I just follow up on that same column where you, you were talking about the kind of flexibility of the numbers or they're being conservative or low? Um, how, how much confidence is there in the, the ten million dollar number uh for scenario two for total development feasibility? The negative ten million.
Yeah, again, I, I think it's really the magnitude of difference in these numbers that help us understand scenarios. So. Again, a ballpark figure, like I, I wouldn't be able to say, yeah, if you build scenario two. Exactly as we described, which is the mix of kind of duplex and townhomes. We'd arrive at a deficit of ten million, but I think the important factor to point out here is. That's a relatively smaller hole to fill compared to scenarios two and three. And then maybe the question is, okay, if we know the ballpark is around negative ten million. What types of tools, development tools, incentives or strategies could we have to fill that gap? Are they even capable of reaching something like that amount? And then that becomes kind of an updated way of understanding feasibility for that specific scenario. Um, I'll know, yeah, sorry.
I was gonna say versus scenario four.
Where's the scenario four? Yeah.
Look elsewhere. If there are, if there are no more questions, I think, I think, oh, one more.
I'm just, it's not really a question, it's more, I guess, a statement, something I'm thinking the whole time, but. Just to help bring it up, you know, we're talking now for that flat area. If I understand it right, you'll improve rap road, that would be the only way to look at it.
Yeah, well, actually.
Houses, which could be one hundred people. We put it higher density, we get more people, some would be able, some without. And if there's a fire, I, I just, I evacuated here. I'm in California, I evacuated, I worked on fires and I'm just really nervous about putting a lot of people behind, going away without.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's very understandable. Yeah.
Five on this, um, what's the chief's name there?
Mike Cussie or uh, was it Aaron Buss?
No, the, the new one.
Mike Buss.
Yeah, so we, we talked, we talked to him, um, and I mean, so let, let me, let's just back, back up a little bit. So it's, we could get into the details on that. I mean, they seem to feel okay about. Getting another linkage out onto rap road, so that there would be a kind of a looped road. It wouldn't be just the one access. It would be a loop. But um, I mean, we could go into the details, but the reality, uh, as the mayor pointed out, this is industrially zoned property right now. The property owner who we did interview for this property um said they would definitely be interested in developing housing on it. But it sounded like they've been sitting on it and holding it for industrial too. So they're not, they didn't come to us. You know, and I don't think they've approached the city as far as interest in housing, but they definitely. Seem like they're fairly savvy and they have some um wherewithal to be able to make something happen. So um. Those types of things would get worked out if the city were to choose to even entertain changing the zoning on it. Which would take an extra study, which would be looking at what your industrial land supply is currently and determining whether it's in the best interest. Of the city to get rid of or decrease its industrial land. You know, does that, does it balance out, man?
Um, so let's say we were able to just trade everything out in the uh railroad district. For TA five, for example, except for the, except for the industrial piece. If we had TA five traded out, we'd be able to develop there first while we continue to work on the rap. Road piece and, and that, that is a mix of, of medium density. I think there's some high density there and there's some, I think there's some low density.
In TA five, you mean?
In TA five.
Does everybody know what TA five is? I know you're all talented, but um, so that's the area on ninety nine on the east side. Yeah, so you, so you're getting into the, you're, you're telling the great transition into where, where we, we should go with this conversation a little bit, which is. What do you do with this, what do you do with this information, right? So, you know, you, it's. And I'm gonna just kind of back up first before answering your question, Mayor, if that's okay. So.
Yeah.
The state of Oregon doesn't require cities under ten thousand from basically acting on this. So if you're over ten thousand in population, um, you're required to do what's called a housing capacity analysis. Every certain amount of years. And then if your housing capacity analysis shows that you're deficient. That you're not able to supply a twenty year supply of housing, then you need to do something about it. So. There's a bunch of efficiency measures and things you can do to increase product productivity inside your um city limits and your urban growth boundary. Sometimes that's not enough and then they'd have to go and expand. So talent isn't in that situation. So we're not necessarily at the state gonna come, you know, knocking on your door from an enforcement standpoint and make you do anything about it. So it's completely up to you from a legislative standpoint as far as what you do with this information. You know, the, the way that I, I, I kind of see it is, you know, you've got a, a multitude of different options. You could decide that the entire railroad district is not feasible. If any of those, any of those options is not feasible and um make a move and do some studies as far as swapping out. That land or land uh per other land and, and um. You have land in urban reserves, as you pointed out, that you could go to. Um, that's an option. Uh, the complicating piece, um, as your city attorney knows, is that you. Uh, the complicating piece, um, as your city attorney knows, is that you have um, a development proposal approved and, and. In for one property which is in your city limits and then that other industrially zoned property is in your city limits, so. You may need to consider from a legality standpoint, I'm, I'm not weighing in on it, but you may need to consider. Keeping those in and only swapping out the stuff that's in your UGB and not in your city limits. Part of the, part of the question could be, do you convert that industrial property or not? And then if you, if you do come to some conclusion that, yes, we want to take some or all of this. Uh, railroad property out, because it's not feasible to develop, it's not gonna happen within our twenty year. Kind of horizon that we look at housing planning in Oregon, um, where do you go? So TA five i- is an option that's on the east side on ninety nine, um, that's like thirty acres. So when we do a swap, what we, what we're looking for is kind of an equivalent amount of capacity, we don't want you to lose housing capacity when you do a swap. So if you have a housing capacity of four hundred units in the railroad district, if you want to get rid of all of it. We're really looking for you to bring in an area that can accommodate four hundred and twenty six units. Ideally a smaller area, because we would like you to be more efficient, right? Whether or not, you know, so, so anyway, there's, it's just that balancing act of, maybe you take out a portion of the railroad district. And that's enough to get, you know, just for you to move into TA five to give you some breathing room. But that's, you know, there's, there's some thinking that needs to go into it, and then you've got the other urban reserve TA four on the other side of the, of ninety nine, right? And that's, that's, as part of the regional problem solving plan is zone industrial, it has to be zone industrial, that could be changed. Um, but there's some history, you know, to that one.
Well, so that has eighty percent light industrial and twenty percent something else.
Well, that, it not, it's, I think it's all, it's all industrial on the um, east side of railroad tracks. And that's actually what all that ended up coming in.
Oh, I thought the front.
I looked at the plan and I think the plan's a little in error, because at one point, they were talking about bringing land in on the other side of the railroad tracks over there and that fell out.
Well, I think that's an important point that you brought up, because I think what it does is it takes the pressure off of this little light industrial piece here. Because the, the, the pro, the challenge with that piece of property is the rap road, it, it comes with a cost. Where housing and light industrial is at a lesser cost for the city in TA four and TA five. And I mean, TA five is obvious, obvious housing and it's all housing. Um, but as far as like whether or not we needed to have light industrial in. That's more accessible, we do have the ability um, to get there before we have to develop. Redevelop rap road, so there are options, these are huge costs for a city to do these things and there are options.
That's, we said at the CSE meeting today that, that, that we would need further studies if we should make changes. Like what kind of studies did you need the consultant knows?
Well, it, so it all depends on which direction you go, so if there are some, if you choose as a city to say. Do a hypothetical here, to just take out all the, the higher sloped properties. You know, in, in that, in that one scenario, um, scenario three, basically. All the stuff that, that this one didn't look at is, that's still in the railroad district, if you wanted to swap all that out. You could probably make a pretty easy justification that, you know, based on the topography and based on the access and the infrastructure costs that you, you know. That this land should come out, um, that would be the, I would say, maybe the easiest case to make as far as then. Taking that land and swapping it over. If, if the, the studies come into play though, if you wanted to take all of the railroad district out and. Say there's a housing capacity of four hundred and twenty six units and you can't make that up in TA five. It's TA five, as far as I remember, there's a, a good portion of it along ninety nine, that's supposed to be the highway like commercial. And that you, I think you can allow, you can allow residential in there, but it has to be like second story, right? So you're not gonna get it. Okay, so you're not gonna get as much density anyway, the point is, is on the thirty acre site of TA five, you're not gonna likely squeeze in. Four hundred and twenty six units, so then the question is where else do you go? And then I think it becomes more complicated because your other urban reserves aren't as clear as TA five.
But doesn't that four hundred and twenty six include the hundred and fifty one that you had?
Well, that's interesting, you know, because the previous, so yes, that's, the answer is yes.
Wouldn't that get lower?
Yes, but the pre, your previous adopted study for the railroad district showed a, uh, without considering that piece. Showed a capacity of about four hundred units, so I think maybe they overestimated a little bit, that's your currently adopted thing, but you could adopt this.
Thanks.
Or discussion or questions?
Um, well, maybe just something to clarify to your question there. Um, there are specific studies like Josh said, that the city of town, because it's a city under ten thousand, is not mandated to do. So these include the housing capacity analysis and the housing production strategy. Uh, and Josh can weigh in more here, but the basic premise is, um. These types of analyses help the city better understand where housing production could come from. So location wise, but also from a tool and strategy perspective, what could the city feasibly undertake to allow for more housing? To happen if, you know, regardless of what, whichever scenario that ends up being. Um, so I'll just say it again, although not required, like it's studies like those that could help. Bolster a city's uh, position in providing needed housing.
And just for everybody. Housing capacity analysis is the new acronym for housing needs analysis, is that right?
Which we just got.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
So other than those kinds of studies, there's.
So you wouldn't need to do those studies, so if you just do an urban growth boundary, what we call an adjustment, which is what I call swap. If you're just swapping land, the, it, it's much more streamlined, so if you're gonna, if the city just wants to expand its urban growth boundary and it doesn't have land to swap. It needs to do those studies to be able to justify how much land it has, what the, what the demand is and, you know, what the gap is there. Um, if you're just doing a swap, it's, it's quite a bit simpler, um, as far as telling the story. Um, especially if you are only swapping for land in your urban reserve, because that's what we consider first party land. If you were going to say high value farmland, then it's a much more, it's a higher hurdle.
Okay, so uh, going forward, would the city council like for the planning commission to? Recommend or advise you in this, and many, is that what you would like?
I mean, we, we, that was brought up last night in our meeting and, and it was said that we were taking the recommendations from the planning commission.
Okay. I think, yeah. We can get right on that.
Are you guys like, oh, thanks or?
It just means that, that uh, what is it, timber, our mass timber might have to wait. Oh, well. If there's nothing else.
I do have one more question, one more question, one more question, I'm a little stuck on the one fifty one here. Um, so I just wanna make sure that if, if we were doing a swap out and we, and I, and I'm hearing. You know, sort of have to swap apples for apples in terms of housing numbers, right? I mean, if you're pulling four hundred out, you've gotta kind of go for four hundred, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's right, in, in.
Here's my concern about that, is that with the piece that used to be TA two, we don't want to, where the light industrial land is. That's not housing, so if that number is not part of the current equation, are we gonna be held to that?
No, it's not, it's zone industrial currently, so there's no housing capacity currently.
Right, so it's just gonna be, so what I fear is if we just took the UGB piece. Which has mostly medium and low density in it, actually, I think it's all, all low, because it's really sloopy there. If we just took the UGB out, I don't think we're gonna hit the numbers that we need to get TA five as a swap.
That's a good question, so we obviously can spend some time offline working on that, on that, um, in the city. Well. Come up with those numbers, but I asked these questions and I didn't bring my cheat sheet, because I hid it in my vest, which I brought to the, to the other meeting and I didn't bring it here, but. The, the total capacity was four hundred and twenty six, minus one fifty one, minus, what did we think the Belmont, what was the Belmont? Fifty, so say four twenty something minus two twenty, or was that right? Two twenty, two hundred.
Yep, and I just wanna clearly say for the record, what I'm talking about is getting to those numbers for consideration, like not, not a foregone conclusion, but we. I, I just wanna know that we can consider that as an option if, if the numbers work out.
Yes, and um, typically with a swap, we're not actually looking um, at the, the types of numbers that. That we came up with here, what we were developing here was to, to develop a feasibility, a scenario of feasibility, whether to determine whether it's feasible or not. What we're doing a swap, we're actually looking at is the underlying zoning and whether there are any constraints on there, so you're looking at the amount of buildable land. Looking at the entitlement through zoning and doing those calculations, so they're much simpler than the calculation done here. Um, so, but we.
Yeah, I think I was thinking that, I mean, in fact, I was thinking that, because we're talking about what was built into the original plan, which was four hundred units, right? So, um, yeah, yeah, I got it.
So we only have to count the part that's not in the city.
Right. Well, I don't know, you guys are gonna make the recommendation, I'm just saying, for, for the question I just asked, I was just talking about.
Okay. But not the annex land.
I, that, that's up to you guys to discuss, but for the numbers, I was just, I was just asking a question if. If your, what you had proposed earlier was, you know, one, one thing that you can look at is just the UGB and if we did that, would the numbers be there? And it might push us to look at other pieces of property to achieve that.
Yeah, I don't typically recommend this, but you could also do reverse engineering, where you actually look at the development capacity of TA five. And then determine how much of the railroad district could we, should we take out to make that balance out, just to give you some breathing room, right? So the intent might be to take it all out, but if, if you do it in different stages, it might make sense.
But this is great, I feel like we made a lot of progress tonight. And some this afternoon.
Great presentation, by the way, it was really easy to follow.
Very good, it was, giving a raise, Alex.